Good evening, everyone. A special welcome to those candidates who have applied for a four-month term on the board. I'd like to welcome you and thank you for stepping up and willing to fill in that position. At this time, I entertain a motion to reconvene an open session.
So moved second.
The Department of Education has moved to reconvene an open session. Any discussion on the motion? All those who agree, say a "aye."
Aye.
Polls, same rank, extensions. Motion carried. At this time, please rise with the smoot of the flag.
Let's link it to the flag. United States up there. It's just a flag. The motion stands. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite in its essence.
At this time, we move to the superintendent's report. I'm sorry, roll call release first, Mr. Trent.
Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Vila.
Here.
Ms. Franco-Herman. Ms. Harris.
Harris.
Ms. Willock-Agerini.
Yeah.
Ms. Narnon.
Thank you.
Ms. Sabina.
Asan.
Mr. Todd.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. At this time, we'll move to superintendent's report slash presentation. Superintendent, come on.
We do have a presentation tonight, but I wanted to just welcome everyone good evening. The district has been off to a fantastic start of the 24-25 school year. At Orchard Hill, which is this building, the core, cub of core values are in full swing, not only in the classrooms, but in the cafeteria, on the playground, in the hallways, in the bathrooms, and on the bus. At the Walk of Assemblies, the Cubs reviewed Safe Spaces, Kind Words, and Friendly Faces to ensure that all students have a positive school year. Many students are earning Cub Core Value stickers and wearing them proudly. To support Safe Spaces on school bus, our kindergartners participated in seatbelt training. We are proud to announce that all of our kindergarten Cubs can successfully buckle, tighten, and tighten their seatbelts and get them on and off. They are ready to be leaders and role models and ride their buses to and from school. Skipping ahead to the older kids, at UMS, the theme for this year is "All In." Socially, emotionally, and academically, students and staff are committed to being members of an accepting, resilient, and empathetic school community. The students have pledged to model these core values by signing community agreements, demonstrating their dedication to fostering a positive and inclusive environment. At LMS, the entire school convened together for an outdoor leg salute to honor September 11. They reflected on the significance, held a moment of silence for those who lost, and celebrated how we stand united as a nation. The UMS and LMS back-to-school night was a success this past week. Families were welcomed by their students, their children, teachers, and administrators. Happy to announce that this year's PSAT will be administered during the school day at Montgomery High School on Monday, October 21st. All 10th and 11th grade students are eligible to take the PSAT. In an effort to make the PSAT accessible for all students while giving the 11th graders opportunities to qualify for national merit scholarships, the high school will be covering the cost for all 11th grade students taking the PSATs. MHS will run a special delayed opening schedule on October 21st to accommodate the school day PSAT. Across the district, students have been provided with a student identification card and line gear to wear with them. After assessing the first two weeks of school, when every student was expected to wear their IDs all the time, Orchard and Village Schools implemented a modification. Orchard and Village students are expected to wear their IDs at arrival, at lunch, and at dismissal. LMS, UMS, and MHS students will continue to wear their IDs throughout the day. At MHS, each grade has a different color line gear, so you can delineate who's a 9th grader, 10th grader, 11th grader, and 12th grader. Now to our strategic plan presentation. And I'm up first, just give me a minute to get over there. And I have my goal leaders, I'll introduce them right now, they could read. So Goal 1 is going to be presented by Fiona Borland, our Director of Career and Instruction and Staff Development. Fiona, you want to give away? Goal 2 is our communication is going to be presented by Mr. Damian Pava, our Assistant Superintendent. And Goal 3 is our SEL goal, and Mr. Corey Delgado, our Director of School Casting and Student Wellness. Okay, the 2024 to 2029 strategic plan. How did we get here? Well, last year, the Board of Education wanted to partner with the community and come up with what does the community want the school district to focus on over the next couple of years? What do they identify as our strengths and our weaknesses? So the partnership with New Jersey School Boards, the Board of Education invited all the community stakeholders to participate in three strategic planning meetings during the 23-24 school year. They were held in December, January, and February. During these meetings, attendees were able to share their insights on the district's present strengths while providing input on the direction we should take moving forward. Also during the first meeting, I did a state of the district, which was very comprehensive, so if any of you have not seen that, it's on the website that I'll be getting to in a few minutes. So during the first meeting, the strengths and the challenges were identified. Three common goal areas were identified at the conclusion of the second meeting. You're going to see those goals tonight. Goal statements and objectives were developed at the third meeting. Over the past several months, these teams, these three teams comprised of administrators and staff members have created action plans for each goal area. So basically, at the end of the spring, when all of the information was culminated by the Jersey School Boards and sent back to the district, we then, I then tasked the administrators and staff with, we're going to come up with the action plans to bring us to here tonight, what we're working on this year. So we're, throughout this school year, we will provide updates at Board of Education meetings to the action to be shared tonight. So for more information, including detailed outcomes for the three meetings, you can visit the website, and here's a picture of it. If you go under the strategic plan tab, as you can see on the left side there, we have what we're doing now in 24-25, and if you look under 23-24, the overview, there's lots of information there, the state of the district presentation, the outcomes from meeting 1, outcomes from meeting 2 and 3, and then how we came up with the final goal statements and objectives. So as you can see, this is our Goal 1 team. The leader is Fiona Borland and Jen Riddell, who's a supervisor of mathematics at the high school. As you can see, we have administrators and support staff and teaching staff on each of the goals. Goal 2, as I said before, Mr. Damian Pava, this is the superintendent, this is the leader. And Kelly Madison, Assistant Superintendent of HR, and Corey Delgado are the co-leaders for Goal Team 3. Here are the final goals, goals and goal statements. First is the student experience, student achievement, teaching, and learning. And the goal statement that came out of the third strategic plan meeting was to cultivate a learning community that's safe, comprehensive, and customized to provide a balanced academic, creative, and engaging experience to prepare students to make an impact on the future. Goal 2, communication, community engagement, and outreach. The goal statement that came from the community was increase community engagement by improving two-way communication so that all community members are well-informed and feel connected. And Goal 3, culture and climate, social-emotional learning, cultural sensitivity, health and wellness, and resilience. The goal statement, enhance the social-emotional learning environment to support the development and resiliency of all learners. So I want to go back just one second before I introduce Fiona to speak about Goal 1. During the meetings, the first meeting, as I said, people came up with their strengths and the areas that they wished that the district would focus on for maybe improvement or to start an initiative that we don't have. By the end of the third meeting, even if there were areas that people felt that they, that were their concerns were not reflected in the goals or the goal statements, everybody walked out of there in agreement that these are the goals and the goal statements that the district will focus on for the next five years. So Goal 1, we have Ms. Fiona Borland.
Hi, thank you. It's really nice to have a co-leader, so Jen Riddell, I sometimes get her up here, I may see me up here, but we have the joy of being able to spend our time focusing on the student experience, student achievement, and student learning. As Mary said, that we work with the community, and in the third session of the community nights that we had in the spring, these five objectives were built under Goal 1. So these are our five separate objectives, just give me a minute to look at them. I'm going to go through each slide with you and talk a little bit about our goal, our focus points this year, and what are our actions going to be. I want to point out that I just said this year, so for all of us, as we share with you tonight, this year is a, this strategic plan is a five-year strategic plan. When you are looking at something tonight, you are seeing what we believe are our first steps. And our first steps are going to lead to us gathering information that is going to change our stuff in the third step, and are going to inform what we do in future years. So if you're wondering about, hey, I wonder if that should be part of this objective? We've probably wondered it too, and it's probably heading in the wrong. Not that we are going to be causing conversation to get feedback, but just know that tonight, what you're seeing is only the first steps of the plan. Okay, so our first objective is to support personalized, diverse, and inclusive learning experiences through comprehensive student advisory. Our focus is really to help student agency, or to develop student agency through universal design for learning, goal setting, and growth mindset. You've heard of universal design for learning, spoken from this podium multiple times by multiple different people, but the summary of it, it really means that we are going to have students engage in learning in representational means of help them. So you're going to see that there's different ways to learn, there's different ways to show teachers what they know, there's different ways to be engaged in the classroom, and what we're really looking for is to make sure that those opportunities are fostered so that each student at different levels can meet their goals that they are looking to establish for themselves. And that's really our second action step, is to help develop classroom opportunities for students to take that agency, to set their own goals, to develop their own voice, and to be part of what they need as a learner. Objective 2, we're going to be, to promote a connected, creative, experiential learning environment, fostering real-world connections within our curriculum. The focus for the year is collaborative partnerships between the school, community, and organizations and businesses to provide authentic educational opportunities for our students. I do want to point out that for this particular objective, it is within the district's curriculum. So we are really looking to leverage those relationships in the amazing community of Montgomery that will actually enhance the classroom experiences. So when we look at where the steps we're going to be taking, we're going to be looking to investigate those collaborative partnerships between the community, organizations, and businesses, and look at how to provide authentic experience and opportunities for our students. That might look like people coming into the classroom, it might look like field trips, it might look like mentor experiences, and there's a lot of things that we're looking at here to draw that real-world experience into the curriculum. We're also going to review the portrait of the graduate, which was one of the artifacts that came out of the strategic plan, the previous strategic plan, which really highlights some of what we now consider soft skills or skills that are really workplace readiness or college readiness skills, and looking at, you know, where, where does that fall into a 2024 mindset? Objective 3, to examine the curriculum to create a standard progression of learning across grade levels, content areas, and academic levels. So the focus this year is cross-building articulation opportunities for both staff and administration. It's just so important to always know where the children have come from and where the children are going. You know, you probably hear, you know, running, there's just a kind of probably a running thought in classroom teachers of like, what happened to here before? And how, you know, what, what did they do? Well, the teacher taught it, and the children engaged it, and so what we need to know is that's our jumping off point for each grade, and so that's really why we want to look for those cross-building opportunities. We're going to look to schedule PK-12 supervisor articulation meetings and really start at that level, and look for the consistency among the curriculum, what are the expectations, and where are those transition points? And additionally, we're going to look for the opportunities for the PK-6 staff to be articulating, and those are, that is, is where we might have to look at a lot of different components of the school district and figure out how do we make sure that that staff have the opportunity and the flexibility to have that really critical articulation. Objective 4 is to integrate emerging technologies. And although we are not going to limit that to AI, there's no way to not make AI the central center of emerging technology that is affecting all of us, and so really that will be the focus of this school year and of this objective. Looking to create a shared vision of AI at the different grade levels, content areas, aligning with our academic integrity policies. It's, you know, really important that we don't just outlaw it, but that we start looking at why, why do we make the choices to use it the way we've been using it? To inform students and staff of what is ethical and acceptable uses. Monitor current and local, current, local, and national education AI software integration, what's being out there that helps our teachers do what they need to do, and also helps our students learn how to use this in the best and most productive ways, and explore opportunities with staff and students for them to share feedback around their use of emerging technologies. Because although I love to believe that I'm tech savvy, no one's as tech savvy as the children and the students using it who are born in the era in which it's developed, and so really giving that opportunity for them to give the feedback of how they see it used in their, in their lives, and then into their academic experience. And the fifth and final objective for Goal 1 is to provide continuous support for teaching staff. And that's if we think of the four things that I just walked you through, the four objectives of Goal 1, they're all ambitions, and the only way to do that is to make sure that our, our teaching staff is supported through professional learning that promotes collaboration, robust classroom experiences, and best practices. So we've been spending 24-25 researching and promoting staff attendance at local and regional and professional, professional conferences, expanding our fence to make sure that we know what's going on in the outside world, the world bigger than Montgomery. Develop a user-friendly procedure so that staff can attend these conferences, and maybe it's not about, you know, filling out too much redundant paperwork, but really making sure that we all get the people where they need to be. Building internal staff capacity for leadership in professional learning through opportunities such as ed and outreach, as they learn great things, bring it back to the classroom, bring it back to their peers, and to explore opportunities for increased faculty to admin feedback. Once again, closing that feedback loop and making sure that we're hearing from all of our stakeholders.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry my voice is a little bit a bit accosting, so that's what happens when the kids go back to school. So as you take a look at Goal 2 objectives, I just want to spotlight the individuals who joined me on Team Goal Team 2. And I had shared this with you a couple weeks ago. So I think we're all fortunate to have the staff in this district, and I was very fortunate to have the administrators and the staff on Goal Team 2 that signed up and are part of that. In particular, I have some members on the team that are also residents in the community or they're former residents. So when you look at a goal like communication, how valuable is that to have, not only a staff member, but a parent who can give that wonderful insight, and they did just that? So as I move on now to Objective 1, institute multi-pronged communication across a range of channels, enabling effective outreach. So quite simply, what we're looking to do is we want to redesign and leverage our website and social media platforms. We could absolutely do better in those areas. Social media platforms that we currently have, Facebook and Instagram at the district level, our principals have those Instagram accounts, they communicate wonderfully, and at the district level, we have Instagram as well as Facebook. Invite our community and spotlight our students' accomplishments. As I said to you, we don't have MSG here or Carnegie Hall, but we have individuals who are going to occupy that. So we have wonderful students who we need to have spotlighting. In order to do that, we want to invite people in. We want to invite them in in a way where they can see them perform on the courts, fields of play, in the art galleries, and on stages. And we believe we can do that by taking a look at the website and finding ways where it's much easier to get information, when are our events, and we want people to come. We want the parents of the students performing to come, we want the younger parents to come, and we want individuals who don't have children yet, but chose this wonderful community to raise a family in the future, as well as those who already raised their family. And then we also want to take a look at something that's been tried and true, and just see if we can build upon it and improve. And it's a commitment from a team where we're not saying anything's written in stone, it's evaluating everything. When I talk about that, in particular, I'm talking about the weekly emails. We have a secondary focus with Objective 4 as well. School community meetings that focus on district and school topics, provide updates and answer questions. I told you all a couple weeks ago, this is like the old school. People want to meet with their principals. They want to have those, those meetings that are more intimate, they want to meet with our superintendent outside of the venue like this, and we want them to have that opportunity to do so. Also, what I shared with you is we can ensure that it's going to be meaningful for the participants when they have the opportunity to have those exchanges with their principals about what's going on in that specific school. We recognize that it can't be a one-size-fits-all, it has to be meaningful. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the duration and the delivery of those exchanges are consistent. We want to respect everyone's time, and we want to take into account that in-person and virtual is the reality of our current day, and we want to offer both of those. Objective 2 within Goal 2, community survey on preferred modes and frequency of communication and content of interest. I, hopefully, if someone's not doing the survey tally, so I don't know how many times we've said survey during this presentation, we're cognizant of that as well. So you're all aware, our superintendents have the results from last year's National Norm Communication Survey, the NSPRA, and some of the results from there. So within this Goal Team, we're taking a look at that, we're going to analyze that with the intention of, we want to make sure that for this year, we're doing effective, using communication effectively, we're doing it the way in which people indicate it, how they want to receive information and those modes of communication. In addition, we're going to administer another, using the same NSPRA survey in the spring of '25, so this school year. Stakeholder feedback. So yes, that last slide talked about survey, and that's absolutely stakeholder feedback, but we also need, in addition to that norm reference, we need feedback from our community and our stakeholders, and it may come in the form of a survey that's created internally at the district level, and it might come in a different way, or it's not a survey, but we're looking for just quick feedback. So it might be something that's sent out, very similar to like, hey, we'd love to know your ideas on a particular topic, what do you think? And that's something that I think is more open, and it can create a very creative, very creative people in this community, and they might be able to give us wonderful ideas. We want to provide that opportunity to do so. And then what we'll do, we'll analyze that stakeholder feedback to determine effectiveness of our communication practices, and if we need to, we'll make the adjustments, because if it's something that can be improved upon, we want to make sure that we're doing that. Objective 3, initiate and develop mentorship opportunities for all members of our community, leverage expertise, and enhance engagement. So my colleague, Ms. Borland, spoke in a similar fashion in the last Goal, Objective 2. We're moving in these real-life experiences to our students into the classroom through the curriculum. This would be going out. So these membership, mentorship opportunities for our students. So we have to first acknowledge we want to hear from our students on this. So what are those areas of interest that you would have if you wanted to be a part of a mentorship program? And then as we get that information from our students, we then want to take a look and say, okay, we then have to listen to what they're saying, and then we're going to have to contact outside agents and see if they're willing to serve that other end of the mentorship. Objective 4, explore using school buildings for non-school activities after hours to engage community and students. So similar to what I said earlier, where we want to take a look at the website, where can we enhance that, where can we make things easier for individuals who are going on that website, we also see the website playing a key role here. So we do need to allow individuals to know that we do have the district facilities, that we have folks outside of the school district utilizing and for wonderful things. So our actions this year will be create a new section on the district website to promote usage by outside agencies and groups, and we want to build a regularly updated calendar of events that are hosted at our district buildings for those outside groups. So when you go on, very similar to what I said earlier about art, music, and athletic, if you can go and you can see what's available, I think that would be something that's wonderful, and then it is giving in a way where folks can sign up, they can have wonderful events. This is really, without the center of town, our schools, our schools are the center of town. Objective 5, pull community in by utilizing a software platform for school-sponsored events to promote volunteerism and donations. So this is something that we want to take a close look at, I think we're also going to get another win when we do this. We'll also be able to determine if there is a decrease in volunteerism, and if so, maybe we could find a way to improve that, and then we could also take a look at what are our annual events that we're currently doing, what are we currently using for individuals when they do want to be volunteers and want to do donations? Let's evaluate those platforms that we still have in place or that we're using, see if they're the most effective ones moving forward, and then of course, this would be what we would do, we might think they're effective, but we have to ask those that are signing up and utilizing them, what their feedback is. So feedback's very critical in this area. Objective 6, funnel streamlined district activities to the township website to reach entire community. So this is where we want to have that partnership with the township. And the way we could do that is we're going to establish regular meetings with the Township Community Information Officer. We're very fortunate in this district to have a communication specialist, so they'll be working with their counterpart at the township level. We want to make sure that we are integrating notable district activities, so we have that wide net where we can inform outside of our website, outside of our Instagram accounts, and really have folks understand what's going on in this district, celebrate the wonderful things that our students are doing, the wonderful things that is occurring in our schools with our staff, and we want to aid in promoting township-sponsored community events on our district website, so it is truly a partnership. Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, good evening, and I thought you sounded very clear. Full transparency, I thought I was going to be a little bubbly, I had a root canal at 4 o'clock today, but I'm coming out of it, it's feeling pretty good right now, so hopefully, hopefully it sounds as clear as it does in my head. But like resiliency, right? You can't let a root canal take you down, resiliency matters in the whole field. So I'm here to talk to you about Goal 3, which is around culture and climate, social-emotional learning, health and wellness, and I was thrilled to see the word "resiliency" make the objective statement. So that must mean enough people in the community, staff members, parents, et cetera, who are at the strategic planning meetings were talking about the importance of resilience. So that made me happy and gave me motivation to get off that dentist chair and get here tonight. So we are going to move through the objectives for Goal 3, talk about our areas of focus and supporting actions. So the first objective is supporting mental health and physical well-being. And our first area of focus is the impact that technology, cell phone use, and social media have on student mental health. This is not a Montgomery conversation, a New Jersey conversation, or even a national conversation, this is a global conversation. The relationship between technology, specifically cell phones and social media, and adolescent mental health is no longer a correlation, it's now a causage. So we want to work with community members, students, staff to, number one, create awareness, promote responsible usage. We've already started partnering with some community groups, and we want to take a close look at what our influence is. We know there's plenty of positive impacts as well when we talk about technology and education. Our second area of focus under the first objective is the district health and wellness services that we are providing our students during the school day. So what we want to do is enhance the current programming, and that includes college and career planning, as that can tie into mental health and physical well-being. We want to examine the faculty and staff roles regarding student health and wellness. It shouldn't, this should not be read as the responsibility of the phys ed teachers and the guidance counselors, it's a collective weight, but the role has changed as the needs of students have changed. So we want to take a look and help to prioritize and align and make sure there's not gaps in our services and who's providing them. And lastly, develop interdisciplinary SEL curriculum aligned to the New Jersey Department of Ed, Social and Emotional Learning Competencies. Moving on to Objective 2, which is encouraging responsibility and accountability. Parents, doesn't that sound like a good idea? So our first area of focus is the structures and practices that we have that foster the positive student interactions and personal accountability. One of the most obvious structures that we have is our school codes of conduct. So we want to take a really close look at, are they effective, are they aligned, and if they're not, we need to do something about that. Codes of conduct lead into classroom management strategies, they lead into what And the codes of conduct lead into classroom management strategies, they lead into what our schools refer to as core values for the year. So we have pockets of greatness and there might be some alignment that needs to take place in there. We definitely need to look at the effectiveness, we want to look at the trends in our students' behaviors as they have changed, excuse me, over the last four years, over the last few years. And specifically recidivism. You know, how, those kids who continually make bad decisions, why? And what are we doing to correct that? And we want to take a, we want to do a research dive on the current trends in mental health, mental health legislation, which is out there and being updated and how that ties into the curriculum goals we want to make. And moving into objective three. Promoting and celebrating diversity and inclusivity so that students feel known, valued and connected. Our first area of focus for this first year are, is inclusive practices. So inclusive practices are things that we do intentionally to make sure that all of our students, including those with disabilities, multilanguage learners, all of our students are able to access the amazing Montgomery educational experience. We, what that looks like, I was here a couple of years ago with Mr. Rizzoli as a matter of fact. And we were, we were celebrating our launch of our Unified PE program. That's a great example of one of our inclusive practices. So we want to take a look at the inclusive practices we have in place, are they effective? Are they doing what we want them to do? We don't just want it to be hit-and-run experiences, we are hopeful that all of the students involved are building more and better relationships. We hope that they are becoming more empathetic and more accepting of those with differences. And that leads to a better school culture. And then when those kids go out into the work world, that leads to a better society. So that's the goal there, so we want to take a look at measuring that. We want to develop plans to build staff capacity so that more staff can foster inclusive practices. And then, of course, identify more areas to incorporate inclusive programs where they don't already exist. And in objective four, it's our last objective, develop a respectful community that uplifts all members. Our first area of focus is school climate and culture. One of our actions is to find something that we find as a reliable survey tool. Who's keeping the survey tally? That's another check. To see, you know, where we stand, we need some benchmark to have it to see, get a better idea of our school climate and culture as parents perceive it, as students perceive it, as staff perceive it. And we also want to establish protocols for district-wide celebrations of student success. There's a lot of wonderful things that our students are doing, sometimes we bring them here and they all get to see it. And sometimes we don't, so we want to be a little bit more intentional about how the norm is celebrated. And that is it for goal three. So I'm not sure what's next, we are asking questions.
Thank you all, questions from board members? I do have one. Goal two, objective five. We talked about volunteerism, what does that look like in the district? What would that look like? The volunteerism or the?
The volunteering.
Volunteering? Well, in this case, we're looking at, my assumption is, the objective was created because there's ways in which folks during the strategic planning thought that we could create a platform, software, utilize technology to get more individuals to participate in volunteerism. So whether it be coming to the schools, helping out that capacity, looking at our larger events, serving in that role, is that what we? Yeah, yeah. So that's what we?
We're fostering participation in our school-sponsored organizations like the PTOs and the PTAs that have significant decrease in volunteerism over the last couple of years.
I think we talked about parental engagement too, right? How to give access to parents, ways that they can get involved. If we utilize technology to share some of the opportunities, they might be more well-versed in participating as well.
Yes.
I have a question on, for Mr. Delgado. Just on the goal three around objective one and social media and so forth. Lately, you know, New Jersey as a state has been focusing and doing some analytics around utilization of cell phones, et cetera. I know some school districts have already put strict policies in place where kids don't have access to their devices. Wi-Fi's don't, are not available for social media usage. Is, does the school, you think, as you look through it, do you think that's something that we would have an appetite for to evaluate, particularly, I think, at the higher grade level?
That's a grenade. So, you know, I don't think anything is out of question. So there's about a thousand schools in the U.S., high schools in the U.S. that have banned cell phones. It's going to be really interesting to see how that goes, we'll be watching closely. I think we first have to take a close look at our high school and not just every high school. So I do think that currently, we have a developmentally appropriate kind of practice policy where they go from, we don't want to see it at all in lower middle school to something called off and away at the upper middle school, unless teachers are asking you to use it for some kind of educational purpose, to a BYOD environment at the high school where the cellphone is not the recommended device of choice, but it's also not banned as the device of choice. So a lot of those schools that we have started to look at that are banning have some, it's often a different student population too. You know, so for discipline reasons they want to make, they're having a lot of issues, maybe more so than our high school. I would say nothing is out of question. I would say that it is, everything's in the conversation to get started. I just wouldn't say that Montgomery High School has the same, might not be experiencing the same volume of negative impact as some other schools that feel more desperate and ready to make this move quicker. So I certainly, we need to have that collective conversation and take a close look. But right now, I do think, you know, we are in a developmentally appropriate place where we're preparing kids for the modern world, where you all have your phones in your pockets and you maybe even have to step out to take a call or do something. So we hope that our kids can use them responsibly. But we, we got to mitigate the negative impact that it's having. And it, so I don't know if that means a phone ban, it's a long way to say, I'm scared to say yes or no.
I'm curious though to know, because there are some teachers at the high school who ask their students to put their phones in their pockets before the start of the class. So I'm curious if we can get information from those teachers about how that type of classroom policy is shaping for them.
Yeah, more importantly, I want to hear from those students. Do you have an easier time focusing when it's over there and not your pocket? Yeah. Well, I hope you're not trying to text him, Cookie, during the school day. It's enabling a problem, so they, you know, but yeah. The immediacy of communication that you expect as a parent is something that we have to talk to you about as well, right? So it's, not you, Cookie, but each other, so it's a big conversation.
I think that just accentuates the point that we have to have a conversation about this, right? So that we're all on the same page. I think right now, we're, we're already behind the eight ball in terms of how do we deal with it. But I think to have that proactive conversation about what is technology, technology's not going anywhere, right? But how do we address it in the district, I think is really important.
Responsible usage, I think, is the goal and mitigating the negative impact. I don't think we'll ever be able to eliminate it. But mitigating it, I think, is realistic for us.
Or do you have a question from board?
I have a question on goal one. You were up.
I'm up, I sit down. And won't you feel left out?
That's okay. So we know that Montgomery is taking extreme pride in being the home-revenant school. It's a premier school district, right? Academics is really very important to all parents, students. They want their students to succeed, they want their students to learn what they are good at and whether it's a college or trade school. They want to be able to have someone at school that will guide them and open the doors and possibilities to which path is right for them. So I remember during the sessions, the strategic planning sessions, the parents that were participating, they were asking about how we can implement maybe different teaching strategies to give our students stronger leadership skills. Open doors to different pathways to career and trade. Improve their public speaking and presentation skills. But also, a lot of parents repeat over and over and whether it's the strategic planning or even through the correspondence work through the board. There is a repeating kind of a pattern of, I guess, inquiries about whether or not our AP classes are structured in a way that opened the door to the maximum possible number of students. So it appears that we have an AP program that, well, some parents claim that other programs is much tougher than AP, which kind of, I don't know.
We have an objective about that up there.
And second is when there is AP classes and I guess there is a prerequisite that allows students to move forward and take AP class in a different subject. Some students seem to be at a disadvantage to take a course that they would potentially do really well. But because they either did not take certain class before or they did not get desired grade, you know, that door is shut, even though those two subjects are not really correlated. Well, I think sort of, but not really. So I'm asking whether or not you already are thinking about different changes or actions to reevaluate those type of situations? Will our students have a maximum opportunities to advance in AP classes?
So as I was listening, I was, no, I was counting to all of the objectives. And I think that if I was going to answer all of the different pieces that you hit on, I'd say that you're really looking at a whole lot more different objectives, right? So part of what you're talking about is, are we, are we giving opportunities for our students to be advised into pathways that are going to inspire them and build their passion as well as help them be successful humans? And within that objective one, is making sure that our students begin to develop that leadership and to develop that agency in themselves to start saying, hey, this is what I think I need as a learner. And then based on what I think as a learner, here are the types of things I would like to learn about. And that all gets mushed together, right? That's a continuum of development that we're going to, that we have to look at to create in our students. I think that when we look specifically at the AP world, you want to look at two different things. I really have a lot of faith in our high school supervisors who have spent as many or more years than I have in this role, in a Montgomery leadership role, being leaders of their content area. I have a high faith that they are, when they're looking at prerequisites, that they're trying to set up as many students for success. I think another avenue to also explore is what AP courses are we missing? And how can we broaden what our AP selections are? And of course, it's going to get into staffing and budget, but those are some, really, those are going to be things that we have to look at when we say, are we, that's that articulation piece. Are we layering expectations and skills in our kids in a way that allows them to explore and continue to grow? So I think that's all part of it. You were mentioning, you know, looking for standard progression. So it's not only grade level, it's grade level, it's different content areas, and then it's the different levels. What does, what does a CP course look like, what does an honors course look like, how does that lead into an AP course? What are the prerequisites in that tunnel that get you there? And so yes, the answer is yes. All of those things are a really robust question, are absolutely buried in these objectives or captured.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you so much for that presentation. And now we'll go into committee representative reports. Start off with the MTA report, Mr. Rizzo.
Good evening, everyone. MTA is excited to be back in school with our students. We kicked off the year with convocation sponsoring the breakfast. We know everyone always loves to start something with food, so we went that route. And it was a great time for everyone to kind of connect and kind of share some summer stories and just kind of ease back into the year. Inside schools, our pep and fast committees have started with that, community engagement focusing on talking to parents about events that we're doing throughout the year. So we've been on tables, handing out waters, helping some lost parents as they kind of struggle in there sometimes in their new buildings. And just kind of go to sign up for the list so that we can say, hey, these are the events that we're going to be doing for the year. The more you can hear from us, the better. So we were able to get some emails. We also put in the Halloween costume exchange boxes into all the schools so that families can drop off some old costumes and kind of exchange with other people so that they can have something different for this upcoming year. And we hope that will lead us into the trunk or treat, which we're hoping to be a big part of. And that's where we start, we're excited to kick off the year. So thank you very much.
Next up, do we have any board member, delegate or representative reports this evening?
Yes, we have the Municipal Alliance. The Municipal Alliance Services Commission met on September night. And I was there in substitution for board member Frank Herman. At first, we discussed some of the budgets and new programming that the Municipal Alliance goes through with the Services Commission grants. Some of the grants that they've helped support programs like Girls on the Run and other things that are partnered with our schools. They're looking to expand some of those grants into some further boys programming, some cooking. They've got a couple of great ideas coming, hopefully, our way. And then we moved into the Faculty of Death Suicide Organizers Prevention Month and mental health awareness. We talked quite a bit about that. And the new program with our police department called Arrive Together. I'm sure there's plenty of more information on that on our township website. And we also talked about some prevention and awareness on substance abuses. Something new called SIN, which I have never heard of before, but it's a smokeless tobacco product. And it has increased in usage over 641% over the last four years or so, up from just 2.9% of U.S. adults using it. So 641% seems to be more focused on. And so they did want us to all be aware of that, talk to our kids about the harms of nicotine and addiction. That is one area. Also, we talked about the upcoming presentation from 10:00 a.m. to noon on September 24th on Don't Get Baked In, which is a virtual training. So another area where we can partner with the Municipal Alliance and get out the information to our youth and our parent community on how to prevent some of these behaviors in our children. She also talked, we all also talked about, there's a community blood drive and Narcon training. There's a lot coming up, and substance abuse and mental health suicide awareness. Additionally, yep, there's two additional virtual trainings coming up on human trafficking in children and having anti-bias discussions in the classroom. As well as just today, Lori sends out an update for a free video on the impact of social media on kids and mental health. It's always such a great wealth of information at the Community Alliance meetings. And a lot of that information is translated over to the Montgomery Township District website as well.
Thank you, MTA. Any questions on her report? There are none, any other committee, any board member, delegate or representative reports this evening? There are none, we'll move into board committee reports. Assessment, Correction and Instruction Committee, board member Dow.
Good evening, everyone. We met for our first ACI meeting of the school year on September 6th, it was both virtual and in person. It was both virtual and in person. The first agenda item was presented by Ms. Young, who talked about the NJSLA update reports. The individual student reports are to be released to all families via Genesis through the parent portal on December 19th. So in a couple of days.
September.
Sorry?
September 19th.
September 19th, my apologies. This is a tentative date, but I haven't heard any difference. So my understanding is that it will be posted soon enough in Genesis for all parents to see their individual student reports from the NJSLA. The DOE plans to have all remaining scores reported and released by September 12th. The DOE also required assessment presentations will take place at this board meeting on October 15th. Preview of the presentation will take place at the ACI meeting on October 4th. The 2024-2025 assessment calendar, we posted to the district website on Tuesday, October 1st. Then Ms. Douglas spoke about the new textbook recommendation, which is called Blanco Economics, and it is for the new CP economics class course in the high school. This textbook is for the new course, and the textbook satisfies both the state standards for financial literacy and includes economic topics in a way that is really understandable to all learners. And it's accessible, not only through the textbook, but it also comes with resources that the students can avail themselves to in the PDF form. Most instruction will be through slides and videos, but this textbook can also serve as a really good resource for students. Mr. Brooks spoke about summer technology projects. Updated us on how they refreshed all of the desktop computers in the classrooms at MHS, UMS, and LMS. 125 other interactive projectors district-wide were refreshed over the summertime. And VES and OHES classrooms and office spaces will be refreshed in the summer of 2025. The technology department was on hand and retained for the 12-month technology staff. And also, they hired a 10-month, or they hired 10-month employees for additional summer work. Windows 10 sunsets on October 2025. And we are up against this deadline to refresh all of the district non-Windows operable computers. SATs were given at Montgomery High School in late August. They had a record number of students attending this SAT portion, and tech staff members were on site. Chromebooks were also handed out to the students that needed them. And the SAT service was a successful endeavor. And then Mr. Delgado brought up the graduation requirement, which is, sorry, the FAFSA, which is now a graduation requirement. Last spring, the district was notified that completing this form would be a graduation requirement for all seniors. The guidance department will be sending something out to senior families, and we'll be talking to the senior students about how to go about filling out these forms. The counselors will be emphasizing the requirement of filling out this FAFSA or to fill out the waiver if they are not going through the FAFSA process. A newsletter to parents will be sent the week of September 9th. So this is obviously dated from our meeting. So it was sent out on September 9th. The state gave guidelines over the summer regarding the waiver option, and Genesis has a form for the parents to complete so that we can manage the accountability of our families. The good news is that our community is very compliant with filling out these forms. And next year, it will be included in the list of the forms that we need to fill out as parents at the beginning of this school year. The guidance department will also be offering parent seminars on how to fill out these forms in terms of assisting parents. And then lastly, the committee was asked for board members to share any topics of interest that they would like to hear discussed at the future ACI meetings. And so the members that were there brought up strategic planning updates, school counseling, student success stories, professional development, and students post-graduation and how they're doing. So I open the floor to any other board members of any other topics that you would like to have brought up at ACI in your future meetings. Any questions or comments?
Any none.
Thank you.
Thank you, board member Dow. Up next, operations, facilities, and finance committee, board member Flack.
Good evening. Operations, facilities, and finance committee met on Tuesday, September 10th. Michael Yeo, director of facilities, reported on the status of the maintenance work done in other districts in the summer. All projects planned were completed as scheduled. The committee began reviewing the completion status of the projects that were included in the 2015 referendum. We reviewed the list of projects funded by the bond issued in 2016. Per business administrator report, all projects were completed. And now we are waiting for the report from the architect that will help us assess the actual cost of each project versus the estimated cost included in the referendum. The 2016 referendum added 18.5 million to our district's long-term debt. The district currently has over $38 million in outstanding bond debt. We will review the status of the projects funded by the remaining portion of the issued bond obligations in the future committee meetings. The committee discussed and evaluated the amount of unpaid lunch debt amount. Our district cares for all our students, and we would never let any child be hungry. However, we urge our parents to review their children's pay schools account to ensure that there is no outstanding balance in their account. Dwayne Washington Villasquez, transportation supervisor, discussed bus scheduling and transportation performance during the first week of school. Over the summer, a study was done to validate that the routes are designed to transport our students in the most efficient way. The new technology installed improved processing attendance, as well as it allows the administration to track the buses and study the routes to identify future opportunities to minimize the time students have to spend on the buses. We received an inquiry from a parent regarding the ID badges our students are required to carry to get on the bus as well as to move around the school buildings. Parents are concerned about the privacy of their children, as well as their safety. The badges include identifying information like picture name and the school where this child attends. If the ID is lost outside school, the parents are concerned about the privacy and safety of our children. So I would like to ask our superintendent to maybe explain how the privacy and safety concerns are being addressed. And also, maybe she can share it with parents, what benefits we will be gaining from using those badges?
Sure, I can read the response to that email. So the requirement for all staff members during the district to display a photo identification is rooted in safety and security. With approximately 5,000 students and 800 staff members in our school buildings, it's imperative that we are able to quickly identify unauthorized individuals on our campuses. Each school also has a visitor management system, which all visitors must engage with prior to entering the secured portion of the building. The VMS prints out a temporary photo ID, which is worn by the visitor while on school grounds in order to get that hit at the driver's license. Therefore, if anyone is in or around the school building without a district-issued ID or a visitor ID, they should immediately be brought to the attention of security personnel who can further investigate. This approach allows us to have a greater accountability and access controls to our schools. Other ancillary benefits to the IDs are using them for payment for food in the cafeteria, for increased efficiency and reduced lines, borrowing books and materials from the school library, and fostering personal connections by helping students to learn each other's names and their staff members' names. Many businesses also offer discounts for students who can produce their ID. We also have a window of time where students in the high school can enter with their IDs outside the bus areas open for the time the buses come and your staff members man in that area. They could also come in the front door for eight minutes, I think it's like seven minutes, and then it locks automatically and they can't get in. They would have to bring the door open and wait. But it helps with accountability. It helps with security, safety and security in all the schools. Another thing in the high school, as I read earlier, they are, the land in the high school are color-coded by grade. And so there's a senior privilege where some students are able to leave early and very quickly you can see who's not a senior who's trying to leave the building. So it's also helping secure that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any questions?
I guess I have a question for the lower schools, like for young kids. How are they, what point is that administration really to make sure that the first leaders and officers use that ID? Because I can imagine that would be a problem for young kids.
So in the superintendent report in the beginning, I said how. They assessed it over the first two weeks and they said, you know what? This isn't really working inside the building for the kids, but they do need it for the bus, right? So that the bus driver then knows that the child is on the right bus, that the child is on the bus, and then the parents can, you know, it's very easily accounted for. Let's say a parent wasn't at the bus stop, since either kid or the bus could fall and you can immediately tell from the computer system that the child was staying on the bus. The other thing that they need to close lunch and then to go home. Correct. And so they reduce the amount of time. And they're coming up with a plan for recess, how to collect it, and then give it back to them because once your recesser attached, because they're still working out the case, but definitely case four, it's not going to be a route the entire day like it is in the older places.
Any other questions for board member Flack? Any none. We'll move on to policy and communications committee. Board members, Johnnigan and Franco Herman.
Okay, so we met for policy. We met on September 12th to discuss a couple revisions around board member number and term, which is a bylaw in our guidelines that addressed some of the changes in terms that are now applicable by law. All of those changes have been updated as per the New Jersey state guidelines. Another policy that we looked at was 5350, which is student suicide prevention policy. This policy was recently revised to include several new statutes. They're around training requirements for staff members, as well as information around student intent of harming themselves and requirements to notify the staff within the school district. All of that has been updated based on the recent NJSA changes. We also tackled policy 7610 around vandalism. This particular policy was also updated based on the recent changes to the regulations. The new regulations include notification to law enforcement in accordance with the appropriate shift in the guidelines. We're also going to abolish remote public board meetings during declared emergency. That was established during the COVID. So we will be abolishing policy 0164.6. And in addition to this, some good news for the board. Last year, we requested the NJSPA to perform a wellness check around all of our policy manuals. We were placed on the list of school districts that are going through the process. It is part of the fees we pay with the NJSPA, which is New Jersey School Board Association. I'm happy to inform everyone that the review of our policy manual has been completed. And the latest findings have been sent to superintendent and myself. Some of the findings that were interesting, although we do keep a pretty neatly formatted manual, there were some areas that we've been asked to take a look at. For example, we have policy adoption revision dates that range from 1999 to 2024, right? And we've discussed this in the past. We also have some policies that reference different standards. We have some policies that reference core curriculum, some policies that reference the new NJSLS. I think there's also some cleanup in regards to the terminology we use just to keep the consistency across the policies. In addition to that, some of them are not cross-referenced, which will need to clean up. And as far as priorities and recommended priorities by NJSPA, they did highlight 12 policies that are deemed critical by NJSPA, which are missing from our manual. And there are also six missing regulations. So this is pretty extensive report. They've also attached a spreadsheet color-coded with all the policies suggestions. So one of the things I will be reaching out to the board for is just to form a little bit of a subcommittee so we could, those of you that are interested in this, like myself, that would like to spend some time and review it and make a proposal to the board of how we adjust it going forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to Cookie.
The district communication specialist, Ryan Wallace, attended our meeting and shared with us that he has met with all building principals and reviewed their schools' input to their social media pages. Just, you know, if you're in the high school or the upper middle school, all schools have highly visible social media pages. So he shared that he is helping the other schools, lower schools, to have more of a presence on social media. And the CS, the communication specialist, has a plan to centralize more events district-wide while the schools will maintain their own social media pages. So the district does have Instagram, LinkedIn, and Facebook accounts. He also shared that he has been traveling to all schools and taking pictures of events such as the first-list schools and going back to school nights and posting these photos of social media to share. He also shared that he will include the board members, because if you're not in any of the schools, you probably won't get the information from the principals. So he will make sure that board members are all, are moving all, would be on all five school email distribution lists in order to keep this form of everything that is happening in that specifics. Part of what he's also looking to do is also part of the strategic plan is to look at the website. So he is currently actively maintaining the ADA compliance of our district website. As part of the strategic plan, he will be, he's thinking of looking at ways to restructure pages of the website to promote community participation. We have shared with him that, you know, for easy access, including the sports page, the teachers' page, the calendar, so for people to access events through the calendar of the district. We also suggested a suggestion box to be on the website so, you know, parents don't have to just email, I guess, the principal, but it could send suggestions directly to the board. And the CS is also continuing to build a communicative relationship with the township. As Corrie mentioned earlier, he has been working with Damian Garata, who is the township's chief information officer. And lastly, both Ryan and the athletic director have been working with the volunteer youth. They would like to feature monthly two athletes from the school. So a lot of positive storytelling on social media and in our local place. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions for board member Franco Herman?
No question. I'd like to just say that all of that increased community outreach and increased attempts to keep the community more informed, that we will see an increase in the numbers shared from superintendent on the communication survey, where faculty and parents, families seem to have a fairly high percentage of people that felt good about the amount of communication they received through the district, but the community at large felt a little disconnected. So good to see. So good to see if this works.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Human Resources Committee.
Being that this is the beginning of the school year, this meeting was very brief. We met on September 10th. Two items we talked about, the first one being our outstanding fill rate. Assistant Superintendent Kelly Mattis reported that at the beginning of the school year, we had zero vacancies. But obviously that will change throughout the school year as we have staff that goes out on leave. Second item we talked about is the tuition reimbursement process for teachers and staff. She explained that and everything else was personnel.
Any questions on HRC?
Every nine, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 27, 2024 executive session meeting, August 27, 24 business meeting, and September 5, 2024 special meeting. So, set up then? It's been properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Although the favor stayed out, opposed, attention? Thank you. At this time, the board acknowledges the correspondence to the board. At this time, we will have the presentation of the BOE candidates for the vacancy. We will proceed as we did the last time. Each candidate will be given three minutes to make a presentation to the board. We will go in alphabetical order and after that, we will reconvene in executive session. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. First up, we have Mr. Bikash Bista. Ms. Roseborn Boten. Any candidate will have three minutes.
Okay.
Service.
Alright, hi, my name is Roseborn Boten. I am a mom of three and a realtor in the community. I'm also a nonprofit organization, nonprofit founder, CEO called Ruffo Books. It is a nonprofit organization that is based in Ghana, where I'm from. And we provide books, children's books, to schools and libraries and need. I thought this opportunity would be great for me as a mom whose son is currently starting kindergarten, he started. It's, for me, as an African-American mom with an African-American son in this school district, I kind of wanted to follow him through this journey. And I thought this position would kind of help me know a little bit more about what's going on so I can provide him, you know, with that information as well. I have two younger kids who I look forward to them also coming through Montgomery School District. So yeah, this is, this is a way for me to just, you know, provide my services as well to you guys as far as my knowledge of my advocacy for literacy, my love for education and kind of be of help to you guys as much as I can be available to you guys to what you need from me as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Deona Go. Ms. Pooja Gupta.
Hello everyone, I'm Pooja Gupta and we have been staying in Montgomery for the last 10 years. I'm a mom of two kids, one in year 11 this year and another one in high school. So I'm here because we discuss a lot, talk a lot with the kids and they kind of push me that you should go for it. You share your ideas at home, you better go and share your ideas. Forum where they can, you could, the ideas can get into action, like because they don't have the ideas or nothing if they don't get into action. So they're like, you have so many ideas, you better go and share where they can be accounted for. So whether I make it or not, but I think I love this, this is the first time I'm coming to a BOE meeting and it is amazing to see the hard work you guys have put in. And I'm lucky to present it for you and share a few of ideas if it's okay. I noted a few points during the presentations which I would like to highlight and I'm an architect as well. So for over the last two, three years, I have been looking into this green school initiative that has been going around by the USGBC, which is the United States Global Green Building Council. So they put the initiative in helping schools become green schools. So that is something I was very keen on, if we can do that to our Montgomery schools. So that was one forum initiative that I would love the kids to know and if we can help out in any way here. Another one would be like, it was very nice to see that AI is being presented and how the technology can, is a positive influence for the technology. So how AI has its worth, we have so much of resources in our community. We have business people, we have doctors, surgeons, entrepreneurs. I would like to see them coming here and sharing with the kids in their, to me, how AI can help. So we all are actually, that is kind of volunteerism that here these people can come and share their ideas and present to kids from the direct, from the, like, horse's mouth, because they know best, they have been to school, they have done college, they know how the world is there. And I think is when I read books and mostly many of it's like team-building books or anything, I go through these books and I see, why am I reading them at 40 years? I should have been living in school, because at that age when you are growing, that is the time you need to learn all these team-building initiatives, where you kind of non-empathy, caring.
Very good.
Okay, sure. So yes, so all these things are coming together. One important thing that we, I think, another thing we need to bring in is if we brought up physical health and mental health, I think nutrition is more important and I've heard reviews from my kids where they have had episodes where they felt a lapse in the school nutrition. So that would be another concern here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Deepak Karir.
Dave, good evening. I want to thank the board for allowing me to present my candidacy to be part of the board out with for a short period of time. My name is Deepak Karir, I'm a full-year resident of Montgomery Township. Prior to that, I was a long-term resident of Somerset County. I have one child in the school district, he's a graduate of lower middle school as well as upper middle school and is now enrolled in, in high school. So as Mr. Todd had said, I thought it's time for me to step up. So I definitely want to contribute and be a representative of the community as part of the school board. By way of background, I'm currently employed at Johnson &amp; Johnson Innovating Medicine within the Strategic Insights and Analytics Group. And my role there is really to provide insights to the commercial team in terms of making better decisions. I was interested to hear all the, you know, talk about surveys and in that my expertise is within market research, analytics, and insights, sales force effectiveness, so I've been involved in a lot of different annual planning processes in terms of the goals and how to go about measuring them as well. So I'd be very interested to see, you know, how we're measuring success with a lot of the goals that were presented here today. So I've been involved in doing KPI, performance tracking, as well as setting up OKRs. So what are our objectives and what are the key results that we can measure around those? Prior to being at Johnson &amp; Johnson, I was also at Bristol-Monterey Squibb and Millardis. So I have 20-plus years of business experience that I think would bring, you know, a good skill set to the team here and help us support any decision-making that's, that's taking place. Also, I happen a treasurer at a homeowners association where I was involved in budget planning, looking at financial reserves, working with the community to reach their objectives. So I think there's some experience there as well that hopefully I can bring, bring to the board. I definitely have a strong interest in representing the community, as I said. I do talk to my son quite often about things like AP programs, use of the badge. So it's very interesting to hear the discussion tonight, this is the first time here. So again, I think my background would enable me to perform the duties and responsibilities of being part of the board and I, and I look forward to speaking with you all in the future as well.
I have a question. What made you choose to come here and, and apply for this position, just Gary? What, what intrigued you about it?
Yeah, so again, I think, you know, it's a, it's a very strong district, school district. So it's one thing to be just part of that school district, but I definitely wanted to contribute to continuing that process. So I did have a chance to familiarize myself with the strategic plan and the goals around that and the budget. And I really felt as though my business experience could be helpful in any capacity to drive decisions and to get, get those goals achieved.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can interest?
I have a question. How do you, you come from corporate world, right? So how do you see the schools and corporate are same in any, any, in any stages or any field you have similarities? Can you tell us?
It's a good point, I, I don't have an educational background, so I have an undergraduate degree in biological sciences from where there's university and I also have a MBA in finance from Rutgers as well. So I'm familiar with the academic educational process. I do think there are some similarities in terms of this level as far as being at the board. How do you set priorities? How do you set goals? How do you build consensus and alignment among people? I've been told I have a fairly calm personality, so I can bring out the best in people and, and, and work together to kind of group things forward. And that's very important in the corporate setting as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rohan Maru. Mr. Jaiid Matung.
Hello, greetings everyone. My name is Jaiid Matung and I have been living in this beautiful community for the past 10 years. I have done my bachelor's and master's in business administration and have also done a master of sciences in data analytics along with some postgraduate diplomas in computer and information systems. I worked for JP Morgan Chase now for the past four years now. Prior to that, I was working for Johnson &amp; Johnson, what, 14, 15 years? Prior to that, I was an entrepreneur. I have been working with global teams, people across, across the globe for my day-to-day job for the past 30 years thus. And I have a good handle on diversity and inclusion. I support women in technology and I bring in expertise which I can offer to the board in the areas of project and program management, formulating policies and procedures, standard operating procedures, that has been a fortune which I have been working on for the past 23-plus years. And budgets and business case developments are some of the other areas of expertise that I have. I have been working with emerging technology, getting the strategy for, for the global companies, like the Fortune companies, Johnson &amp; Johnson and JP Morgan for the past 15, 20 years now. And I think this is what I can offer to the community over here. As I love the community, it's a beautiful place, I have been living here for the past 10 years. I've seen the community grow and I wish all the childrens can benefit from, from this Board of Education members, what a work we have been doing for so many years, it is tremendous. And I would like to see this community thrive and grow more and the students grow up much better and this community. Thank you.
I have a question, because I remember you from the, the previous round of the vacancy and from that interview, I remember that you were speaking about their analytics and how the, the skills that you have and you developed in your job could translate into helping us with identifying opportunities for student academic improvements. So maybe you can tell us about like how your skillset can relate to the jobs and responsibilities that each board member has and what basically, you know, how our students benefit from the focusing.
Sure. So any decisions when you take or make a decision, you have to base on some assumptions or some data. And this is where the data which you have or which you can gather easily from somewhere else within your reach can help after analysis, a thorough investigation can be done and a decision, an informed decision can be made using the data. And this is how you can have a better, say, informed decisions that can help the community or come up with some better policies for the school district. For example, you may have data of the number of children over the past years. Each school district or each class has how many students, every grade, you can analyze and see is there a growth in the trend of the intake of the students who are coming into the community? Then based on that, you can, for example, gauge whether you have sufficient number of teachers, teachers to teach all these students or not. That's some type of a simple example which I'm giving. Other things is maybe you can have the data of the community, how many houses have been purchased, how many new houses have been built, what is the number of families who have come into the community? And based on this, you can maybe predict whether you need to increase the number of classes, reduce the number of teachers or come up with some other ideas. You know, these are some simple, simple things that you can look into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brittany Miller. Mr. Julius Nunez.
I do want to start off by thanking everybody being here today. Both the, the board for dedicating your time to do this, knowing it's a volunteer position as well as all of the other candidates who are here also under free time. Just, it's a great sign of the, the amount of volunteerism that there is in the committee, people wanting to get involved. And also, also knowing that it is a four-term position, a four-month-long position. A little about, a little bit about myself, my name is Julius Nunez. I've been a member of the Montgomery community since 2016. Proud husband, proud father of three. Emily, who's eight and entering third grade, Alexandra, who's five and entering kindergarten, and William, who's 18 months old. They're my motivation for being here today. It's, it's wanting to give back to the community, hear the input from the community and what is, where the needs are. Again, also want to be realistic, knowing it's a four-month term. I may have my goals, but I also want to understand what, where the greatest need is within the school system and what can be done in four months from the existing committees, existing needs. Hearing just the, the report outs from the various committees, I completely agree, right? Our school district is committed to providing every child with the opportunities that they need to succeed. That together we can ensure that every child has those opportunities, the resources, the counseling, and most importantly, the encouragement for them to reach their maximum potential. And I think that's what our goal here is as a, as a community, as a school board. It's creating the opportunity, so when opportunity presents themselves, the students know how to go and about it and execute on it and really reach their max potential, both academically and personally. Here, a little bit of more about myself, I do, as well as some of the other candidates, I do work for Johnson &amp; Johnson straight out of school in 2005, so I've been there for, for almost 20 years now. In global finance, I lead the medical, the In global finance, I lead the medical device sector as far as implementing medical financial planning systems and actual systems as far as reporting out to Wall Street, as far as return on management reporting, degrees in finance, information systems, marketing and psychology. I do a little bit of teaching and learning, like as we're rolling out a lot of these financial systems, a lot of it is going back to our multiple user bases and teaching how to do these tools, doing the education. So heard it's in terms that I've heard before about the universal design, people learn differently. We have to be aware of different ways of learning as far as people learn by seeing, some people learn by doing, some people learn by, a mixture of those. So it's a balance and it's great to hear that as far as the, some of the outputs as far as the committee meeting minutes and how our approach is towards education in the school district. And again, knowing I have seven seconds left, I'm here to help. That's the one thing, the one message I want to get across, here to help whoever the need is for four months, I'm only to dedicate my time.
I have a question. So since you mentioned that this position is for a pretty brief period of time, so I'm just wondering if you would be willing to make a longer-term commitment in the future? Because I mean, like right now, of course, the deadline for submissions, for petitions, for the full term is over, but would you consider a full term maybe next year or the following year?
That's an excellent question because I had the same conversation with my wife. Because I've been wanting to get my vote, but I mentioned I do have an eighteen-month old at home. So when I got the email last week, first person I text messaged it was her, like, hey, this has opened up, it looks like it's a four-month position. Can we as a couple make that decision, okay, I'll dedicate some time, let's see how it goes? Again, I've been in JJ for twenty years now, but it almost feels like an internship. Let's feel it out, let's see how it is. Again, also, this is what I want to do, but I also want to understand where the needs are, knowing it's four months. It does feel like an internship, like when you're in some of your interns, you have to get some goals and objectives, what can you do in these four months, what can you capitalize on? And yes, but at the same time, I also understand like the November election, that has been closed, but yeah, this may, maybe it plants a seed for me to do something in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Priyanka Bonadurthi. Mr. Albi Rizik. Ms. Jessica Rodriguez.
Hi, I'm very excited that I can be here, this is fantastic. I've actually lived in Montgomery for the past almost forty years now and this is the first time I've come to one of these. I used to go to school in this building in nineteen eighty-five, but it's been a while since then and it's really fantastic to see how everything has really grown and evolved. I mean, I remember back then, things were not diverse, things were not inclusive and now there are so many pushes to be more diverse than inclusive, so I'm thrilled about that. I have two school-aged children, one, well, she's almost school age, and the other, my son is eleven and he goes to Rock Brook. So I have to thank the district for being able to provide that for him. I am really invested in the future and the well-being of this district and the children. I am here to stay, I am probably going to live here until I'm old and gray, so I am forever interested in everything that goes on here. My family is involved in the community, my brother's a volunteer at Fireman for the past twenty years and my mother is a volunteer on a lot of different things, it's work, very twinned with the family. So I just want to make sure that I'm really aware of how really devoted I am, even though it's just a formal position, I would be interested in doing it longer. It's been a bit of a road to get to here. I have two jobs, I work as business managers of two medical offices and I've been doing that for the past fifteen years. So I can see where the money goes and I'm good with budgets, so I guess I have that going for me. So I do feel that it's important for everything to keep improving and it's encouraging to see that it's well on the way there and I'd like to be a part of it. Any questions?
Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacy R. Ushisawa. Dr. Tain Wang.
Good evening, everybody, good to see some of you again, back. So appreciate, it's really exciting to see this opportunity open again, even though I'm also running for the November election too. So within this limited time, I'm going to introduce myself again and see why I'm running for the board and what I can bring to the board. And also, I think this is a great chance for me to introduce me in more depth, like committee, a BOE members know about me and also the community know about me as well. So I'm running for the BOE because I'm really deeply committed to the improving educational outcomes for all students in our community. I'm a data scientist working at Ruckus, I'm also having two kids. My elder kid is a K at Orchard Hill, she's been there for three years, we had wonderful experience with the school and this also another motivation, personally, I'm very attached to this school district. Professionally, because I'm working, I'm a data scientist that worked at Ruckus Reversi, I'm very experienced in statistical modeling, research methodology and assessment design. So I believe I can bring a very unique experience to the board. My professional work involves using data-driven, data to inform decision-making, I have led large-scale projects that focus on improving educational programs through evidence-based strategies. So at Ruckus, I collaborate with colleagues across departments and schools to analyze data for decision enrollment, management and enhance institutional effectiveness. My work in assessment design aligns closely with the BOE role in overseeing student achievement and growth. Having also lead cross-functional teams at Educational Testing Service, which is my previous working organization, I worked at the NAEP program and I believe our school district also participated in NAEP program. And from the NAEP national assessment results, we've known because of pandemic impact, you know, student achievement had decreased a lot. And then what can our school district do to help our students bounce back? And for the younger kids, what we should focus for them to build fundamental skills? And for higher-grade high schoolers especially, how can we better prepare them for college readiness? And because my unique experience working both in K-12 and High Act, I believe I can help bridge, close the gaps and contribute this to our community. I think I'm running time, but that's all. And if you have questions, please feel free to ask.
Any question?
Yes, I have the same question that I asked for the other gentleman. Basically, I do remember when you came last time and you spoke about your work and the data analytics and then you also referred, you kind of mentioned good examples about how your work relates to analyzing students' performance and how that aligns with the program that we have, the universal design of learning. Can you tell us more about how you could bring your skills to the board?
Yes, that's a very good question. So I thought about the question again, I thought, because I, you know, not just my education or in the certificate, or I have PhD in measurements, design and research design, but also my whole professional work is all about education, K-12, and right now I'm working in High Act. So through running night, even just for my day-to-day work, I saw all the questions and then I immediately went very closely to our school district. For example, as I just mentioned about the NAEP results, you know, before pandemic and after pandemic, the whole nation, and also you can go to the website, National Report Card, you can see the New Jersey, the New Jersey as a state also dropped significantly. And my question is, how about our school district? What are our school districts performing at this national level? And how about we vision it further? How about international? There are international assessment there, how our school district compared to the international one? And if not international, we can just also compare about other similar school districts, for the state assessment, how we're doing right now compared to years ago? Are we improving significantly? What are the parts we're doing well? What are the parts we have room that we can grow? So those are the questions that also I believe not just me, but also the community also interested in knowing about this. I believe my role is I can, you know, we can transparent and how we can deliver the message to the community, what we know from this whole process, grow together as a team, work together with the school district together, find the answers to all those questions and also immediate questions, the parents know about, want to know about that, schools also want to know about that and teachers too, because all those questions can become guidelines for practitioners and also for parents, how can we engage ourselves to help our kids at home and teachers, what they can do in school? And this also for different grades too, as I mentioned, higher, high school students, they have different needs, as we mentioned, see in the previous presentation, they talk about AI world, high-tech world. And then how we can prepare those higher aid, higher-grade kids to merge into that world? And then we also don't forget we have younger kids growing up, right? Pre-K and K, what can we do to help them build those fundamental skills? Maybe high-tech is too far away from them, but what are the basic literacy, early literacy they can build, go to that world? And also what are the basic STEM programs we can help them grow into that direction? It's all about the community work together, grow into the same direction and we have the same common goal as we want to go. And I think that's the, that's the common goal we want to go. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other question? Thank you.
Oh, by the way, can I mention we have a great website, toprepresentingourcommunity.com? If you're interested in knowing more about us for your November vote, please go and visit that website. Thank you.
Mr. Yulun Frank-Yao.
Hello, this is working. Good evening, okay, member of the board and also the five from the community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Yulun, I call myself Frank-Yao, I'm a resident of Rocky Hill. I'm honored to be considered for this position for the Montgomery Board of Education. I moved from to Montgomery six years ago from Trenton. Currently, I have two kids who is at second grade and eighth grade. And on the way here, my son, Mary, is still working on my speech, like Mary. Okay, so this is a long meeting for everybody and I'm very familiar about this kind of meetings because currently I serve on the planning board in the Rocky Hill. So sometime we have the meeting to, you know, ten-thirty, eleven-thirty, so I really appreciate everybody's time and effort to volunteer to serve our community. I look at the bench, I do not consider them as a competition today. I consider them as the same person as I am, who wants volunteer our time and effort to this community to build this company stronger. Okay, a little bit more, I want to discuss myself is like currently, I'm a state authority, not elected, I work for state, I'm a capital program manager. So I have experience managing large-scale capital program with complex components, high deadline, strict budget and also, you know, the bond funding issues. I know Montgomery is currently working on the long-term facility maintenance capital program. I think my, I think my experience definitely can help ensure that any future capital projects are carefully planned, financed and executed through a balanced approach that considers budget and company long-term needs. By managing the capital program wisely, we can make sure that the district infrastructure is maintenance and up to meet the future demands without burdened tax pay. I have thirty seconds. Okay, meanwhile, I'm also a vice president as Huaxia Chinese School and Principal, have still which is conflict with Montgomery School District. As a vice principal at the Chinese School, I work closely with the teachers, parents, students and provide supportive, enriching education environment. This will give me a firsthand experience with the operation, challenge, school face, the center, the school facing. It's a weekend school, but we have four hundred students. I have four hundred students, I have been that position for almost like six years. Okay, at the end, I really appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Any question? Thank you so much. We want to thank all the candidates who showed up tonight and stated your cases. I think we all just want you to know that you've made our job very hard tonight, so we appreciate it. At this time, what we'll do is we're going to go into executive session, have discussion and then we will come back out into public session. So at this time, I entertain a motion to reconvene in executive session. The proper move in second, all those in favor state aye. Aye. Those opposed, say right. Extension. We are now in executive session. All right, thank you for your patience. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to reconvene in open session. The proper move in second, all those in favor state aye. Aye. All right, we are now back in open session. As I said before, to all those who applied for this four-month position, we want to thank you on behalf of the board. It just shows that you are willing to make a short commitment, but nonetheless, a commitment to making this community a much better place. So again, we want to thank you. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the Board of Education seat vacant.
For president, I respectfully nominate Mr. Julius Nunez to fill the vacancy on board.
Is there a second?
Yes, may I second?
Okay, do we have any other nomination from the board? There are none, nominations are closed. Roll call, please, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Beilek.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Holika Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Nargana.
Yes.
Ms. Vina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Congratulations, Mr. Julius Nunez. Mr. Trent will be in touch with you regarding next steps. So again, thank you so much and congratulations. At this time, we'll move to action item, action agenda items, public comment. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees and board members and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually started at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Public comment for action agenda items only is now over. Public comment for action agenda items only is now over. Seeing and hearing none, public comment.
Could you please tell us which action agenda items are proposed?
I wasn't sure if this is open to the public. I was just gonna ask you, um, is this for reading any comments, concerns? Or is it following a certain action agenda item?
That will be at the end of my public comment.
Thank you, I can move it, thank you.
Any comments on the action items? Hearing none, public comment on actions and items is now closed. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept agenda items one point zero through four point three.
So I would like to make a motion to table item one point five for further discussion at the end of this session. Second?
It's been properly moved in second.
Uh, Ms. Dowling.
Are we voting? Yes. Yes.
Ms. Fielak.
We're voting on another motion to table?
That is correct, we'll table.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Hermann.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Holaca Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Nargan.
Yes.
Ms. Svena.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you.
So at this time, I entertain a motion to, we'll, uh, have a motion to accept one point zero to one point three with the exception of one point five.
Seven.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Roll call, please. One point one to four point three, that's right. One point one to four point three with the exception of one point five.
Right, Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Fielak.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Hermann.
And you thought same on three point four.
Could you repeat which?
Three point four for the trouble.
Ms. Franco Hermann.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Holaca Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Nargan.
Yes.
Ms. Svena.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes, thank you.
The floor is now open for discussion of one action agenda item one point five.
Jack, I didn't realize that my trip is on three point nine.
Three point four.
Three point four, sorry.
Correct.
Apologies.
Floor is now open for discussion on one action agenda item one point five.
Okay, so the purpose of the discussion for the board is, as we've been, um, hearing today about the strategic plan and the goals, uh, for the school district. Uh, as, um, we also had a retreat a few weeks back and we had an opportunity to, um, enhance perhaps some of the verbiage around the, the expectations around those goals. Those goals are very important to, uh, us as board members as we will be then assessing whether we've actually fulfilled, um, the responsibilities, not only of the school district, but also of the board. So there are some enhancements that actually board member, um, Michelle shared with us that we wanted to, to run through. So if possible, how, how should we do it? Should we just read through the enhanced language and see if we, we would be comfortable with the way it's written? Is that their approach?
Yes, well, uh, board member Fielak read the motion, so the floor is actually hers. Um, and then we can discuss.
Nobody's saying it. So, um, just like my fellow board members said, we had a board retreat and, uh, we would like to, uh, find, uh, wordsmith some of the goals that, uh, came from the board retreat discussion. Uh, we want to set the goals for, for the district that are, uh, reflective of what, what feedback we collected during the strategic planning. And we want them to be specific enough to allow us to evaluate whether or not, um, our efforts to, to make the district better, um, are successful. So I personally would like to, um, change the, the goal number one, uh, language and replace the last phrase, uh, make an impact on the future. Replace that phrase with build successful lives and make positive contributions to society.
Julie, we're going to get a support agenda.
Yes, so the, the revised. So we have it on top, right? So the revised.
That's for sure.
That's the one, right? So that's what's current and what.
Do you have a written copy of yours? And if you do, share with Jack, so Jack can project it.
I will.
You're talking about goal one, is that correct?
Goal one, yes.
Goal one as in, as in.
I said it. Yeah, I would like to basically replace, make an impact on the future with a different phrase. That's more specific to student success.
So just for clarification, hers will be one motion, yours will be a separate motion.
Correct.
So just for, for a clarification. So she, yeah, so she will.
Well, I don't know if it's a separate motion, but she, she's talking about wordsmithing. Yeah. And I guess mine is word smithing as well, but in a, not using the same words. Right, so you would have to move to change it to the language that I put. Joanna would have to move to change it to the language. Then we have to follow in the ways of the goal.
You have to motion to amend what part you want to amend. Correct. Which leaves the rest of the motion intact. So whatever you want to change, you have to motion to amend. But everything else that you don't change will stay the same.
And as a bad by two thirds.
Two thirds of a ingredient or two thirds of the nine, so six or five?
Six. Cause even though they.
Right, seventy-five percent then.
Correct.
Yes.
I know, I, I know.
That was impressive.
Do you want to make this up?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Fielak, yeah.
Her motion will be forward.
Oh, this is.
So, Jack, let me share something with you. I have the current loss in. I see.
I do have that, it's just a comment.
That's second.
I see it, so you can work on.
This is Michelle, right?
No, no.
This is, oh, this is.
This is Michelle, sorry. Yeah, we have the strategic plan.
Now, board member Fielak, please repeat your change, your proposed change.
Yes, so I would like to try make an impact on the future and replace that phrase with build successful lives and make positive contributions to society.
All right, you've seen board member Fielak's proposed change, discussion on the change.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna put forth my, uh, opinion about it only because I, something that I shared with Joanna at, uh, our retreat. So I think it's only fair for everybody to hear that, that opinion as well. Um, I come from the belief that in education, we're trying to always, uh, inspire children and inspire educators to, to try to do more. And that idea of making an impact on the future is, um, yes, it's very lofty and sometimes it's hard to pin down type of thing. But, um, I always see it as, you know, we're trying to educate students for possibilities that they don't even know exist yet. And so their impact on the future, I get where you're coming from saying, no, we need them to be, to have all this concrete, that they're gonna be productive members of society. And I want them to envision what that society is gonna look like. And so I like that lofty language first of all.
I mean, I, I know exactly, uh, what you mean, but I don't think that your phrase limits them to, to, to reach for the highest possibilities of their, uh, potential. Uh, the reason why I do want to make the changes because in my view, the phrase make a, make an impact on the future relates to pretty much every single person that lives. So as long as, you know, like you're part of the society, you make an impact on the future. Whether you contribute, whether you don't contribute, you make an impact on the future. That's why I think, you know, uh, our program, our curriculum, uh, is to be structured to help our students grow and reach their highest potential so they can contribute and make positive contributions to their society.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, at this time, I entertain a motion to accept the proposed changes by board member Fielak. It's been properly moved in second to, for the amendment based on Ms. Fielak's motion. Roll call, please, Mr. Trent.
Ms. Dowling.
No, I, I believe the, um, language is strong the way it is, sorry.
Ms. Fielak.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Hermann.
No.
Ms. Harris.
No.
Ms. Holaca Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Nargan.
Yes.
Ms. Svena.
No.
Mr. Todd.
No.
Thank you, motion is not carried.
Are there any other motions on different forms at this time? Item one point five.
So I'd like to bring up also from the, uh, discussion that we had at the retreat in, um, in all transparency. Um, I want to be very clear about saying that I respect the process that we went through in terms of the strategic planning process, um, that included the entire community. Um, my goal was really just to sort of focus us as a board of education, um, to, and my understanding is that the strategic goals can remain, um, while we can sort of really look at the district goals, um, again, to really get us focused as a board of education to make sure that we are in alignment with the strategic goals, um, sorry, the strategic plan, but that we also are, um, really specific in our language. So, um, my proposal really is to change, um, while, while the meat is still there, to change the goals, um, slightly so that academic excellence is our first goal. It really concentrates on the academic, um, rigor of our program, um, supporting our students and supporting our faculty. Um, goal two would be the student experience, which really encompasses, um, the idea of guidance, customization, and support, um, with, which encompasses, um, the health and the wellness of our students. And then the third, um, really sort of, um, talks about the communication piece, which is so important. But I believe that communication is part of building a strong culture and community, sorry, uh, culture and climate. So I wanted to sort of put that in one bucket, um, understanding the importance of strengthening our communication. But I believe that if we strengthen our communication, that we will have a stronger culture and climate. Um, so I, I played around with the words, but the idea again was not to change the, the meat of our strategic, um, planning initiative, but to really specifically, um, target what, what I think we should value as a board of education.
I, I do like your proposals, Michelle. I think they really run in parallel to the strategic goals. And just a reminder that these district goals are what we're gonna use to evaluate the superintendent. So do we make it as clear as possible? It's up to the superintendent to make sure that when at the end of the year, she can tell us how these district goals, you know, um, align with the strategic goals. It will be, you know, her job to do. But I think they're, they're very much aligned to what Fielak had.
Yeah, I think that particularly for me, the second goal, I think we really wanted to hone in on the need of the students as we've heard in the strategic, uh, planning sessions from the community around the enhancements in the guidance, the customized learning, uh, the ability to support, you know, different types of academic, um, needs. So I do feel like this language represents what we heard from the community, um, much more concisely. So I, I'm very happy with it.
Board member Dowling, can you just go into for each one, how, how they align to the strategic goals?
Um, so academic excellence, again, the goal one. Um, and when we really heard about the objectives earlier tonight, I think again, I saw a lot of alignment, um, if not exact alignment. I think this is just in an effort to really hone in on the three categories, um, that we heard a lot about from the community. But the ac-, you know, the academic excellence speaks to the, the achievement, right, of our students. Um, the student experience of the guidance, customization, and support talks about the social emotional learning. So that aligns to goal three. Um, and then the culture, climate, and communication piece, while communication stands as a, as an entire goal, um, I would like to propose that it falls into the category of culture and climate. Does that answer your question? And they all intertwine anyway, yeah, I mean, that's what, they do all intertwine. I just, I, I do think that it's incumbent on us to, to make sure that we are, um, focused on our academic excellence, which again, I think as a school, that's, that's our priority. Um, and then to also give as much credence to, um, the guidance and support that we give our students.
And you're worried for all three, that's complete?
I'm sorry.
No proposed changes for any of the, any other?
I'm, I'm happy to play with the words.
No, I mean, we're voting tonight, so I just wanna make sure what we have up there is. Any other discussion on?
I, I just wanna, I, I like the idea of having the student experience as part, you know, it being kind of elevated above the communication pool. I know that we do have work to do, to be done with communication. Yes. Especially out of the community, um, the larger community that aren't parents, uh, in the schools. But, you know, the bottom line is that it's all about whether or not the students are having a good academic and social, emotional, mental health, everything they're doing. So I agree with that. I'm not sure that I see, um, the, there's no mention of safety in yours. There is in the, just in the strategic plan goals. There's a couple of things that I feel like are left out and I would be a little bit, uh, I don't know that I would, I would wanna just go about. Just seeing this for the first time tonight. And I would emphasize that, you know, again, the objectives of the strategic plan, I think, really support. I think, really support each one of these three goals. And that was really the intention. I, you know, again, it's not to rewrite it. It's not to propose something new or different. I feel really comfortable with the communication of the strategic... I mean, every single objective under communication speaks to the need that our community talked about, you know, in terms of better communicating. And so without the objectives, I don't think that this works. But I, again, the intention was to not eliminate anything, but just to...
Yeah, I think that you really tackled a lot of the... Once again, I'm going back to the discussions we had with the community, right? I mean, particularly on the goal three with resiliency of all learners, fostering consistent, inclusive, and effective communication of strength, accomplishment, events, activities. Those are all things that became very important and in... I just think it just enhances what had been asked of us. So I don't see any issues. I think it almost fills in the blanks a little bit for me because it was at much higher level initially when we looked at it the first go-round. And to your point, there's a lot of the depth of it, Maria, that's going to be in the goals of the objectives of the goals where you can really dive into very specific. This really gave me a sense of the community voice as we discussed in the past, right? This was reflective of what we've heard during those sessions. So I'm very comfortable with that language.
I think it's helpful.
So to Maria's suggestion, if we included the word safety in goal three, I would suggest including after the word health, so it'll be community by addressing the health, safety, and resilience of all learners. If that... are you okay with that? How do we do that? If we edit?
I mean, I think that, you know...
Can we wait on this and process this a little bit since this was just introduced this evening? Or do we do...
We don't have to vote it to be tabled until next meeting. We never have any motion for that as well.
Be willing to withdraw your motion and have a motion to table this to the October meeting.
Sure, to give the committee an opportunity to process. Absolutely. Sure.
Motion is withdrawn. Can I have a motion to table 1.5 until the October meeting?
Second?
It's been properly moved in second to table 1.5 until the October Board of Education meeting. Roll call, please. Yes, Ms. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Fielek?
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Hollick-Jernan?
No.
Ms. Nargen?
Yes.
Ms. Spina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we can circulate from Officer Sal so that...
So the motion will have to be back on the agenda as opposed to...
Okay.
All right, motion, yeah. Thanks, Sheriff. At this time, we have new business from the public. Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both in the chrome book provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as a question-and-answer session. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided to end this session. Public comments for new business is now open.
I haven't dug my name in any chrome book. I wanted to ask if I should just introduce myself, give the commentary, and then put the name in? Thank you. Good evening. I'm Chitra Thielan, resident of Montgomery, also a parent of a current high school. I'm a college freshman. First, I want to thank the board for allowing me to voice a concern in this public forum about MHS science curriculum. I do want to thank you for bringing up AP chemistry issue for goal one. That's my commentary with a lot of detail that I want to provide to the board. I have gone to the school as well. We are from Connecticut, and the example I gave is for Connecticut school systems that are on par with MHS. But I did some homework with Princeton and Hillsborough, and I want to give you that comparison here. Other schools seem to have a graduate path in high school to equitize students to the sciences, help them prepare for AP courses. In Hillsborough, we have two science APs that are offered to sophomores. But more importantly, they end up preparing their sophomores for it. Montgomery offers just one AP. We have AP chemistry in sophomore years. Hillsborough offers CP level honors programs in freshman year to ensure that their students are prepared for it, that they don't just have to jump in and dive into it. Montgomery has not offered these courses for years now, so sophomore wanting AP sciences have only one choice. I presume and I believe that the school has the students' best interest in applying AP chem metrics. Montgomery's AP class, being very tough, is a well-known fact for decades. Students have experience difficulty. Mr. Valus is hundred percent right. It's a tough class. If you cannot manage it, don't take it. But the students don't have another choice. They're forced to take it if they have an ambition to take an AP class. So in spite of struggling with poor internal scores, they do very well on board AP exams, though. They bring in fours and fives. And if they don't meet the school's internal chem criteria, they're not allowed to take an AP bio course through their junior year. So I'm quite puzzled why the school would choose to place such roadblocks. Now, let's consider the current juniors and the senior batch. All three sciences taken away to experiment with ITELS. That's a loss of an entire school year where the children could have been pushed on CP chemistry to prepare them for AP chemistry, especially if the stakes were going to be so high. So this is in line with the student experience that I heard. And I have to say that this could be demotivating as a student experience. The school strategy seems to be at odds with wanting to help Montgomery students become more competitive college applicants. This year, Rutgers has also increased in rating, which is also going to be a roadblock for being competitive. So I want to come through by reiterating and making a plea to the board to please try to remediate the school-specific issue for our current juniors and seniors to make them more competitive college applicants. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public, comments are now closed. Superintendent, block on anything you'd like to address. At this time, is there any closing discussion from any member of the board?
Can I ask a question? Just kind of to maybe explain or re-explain. I'm not sure that taking a CP course in chemistry would help prepare us to be for an AP course in chemistry. That... right? An AP course in chemistry or any AP, you wouldn't take the same course at a lower level prior to in order to prep you for it. They would be based upon distinct grades from other sciences. And sciences are that unique field. They're so distinct in biology, chemistry, physics. And have to... just the science has ITELS. Right. You have to... you have to watch. So I just wanted to make sure that that... I think that that was the suggestion that I heard, but I don't think that that would be an actual... Someone's look at it after we have something, right? Is that...
Any other discussion or points from the board? Here are none. At this time, I entertain a motion for adjournment. It's been properly moved in second. All those favor stated. All those proposed, same right. Consentions? Thank you, everyone.